Well, hello, everybody. On behalf of the Department of Consumer and Business Services and the Division of Financial Regulation, I'd like to welcome you to our Fourth Annual Public Hearing on Prescription Drug Prices. My name is Andrew Stolfi, and I use he/him pronouns. I'm the Oregon State Insurance Commissioner and the Director of the Oregon Department of Consumer and Business Services. We're glad to have you join us today, and we have a lot we want to cover. As usual, we will also have two public comment sessions to hear directly from you. We encourage you to sign up using the chat if you'd like to provide testimony. You're always welcome to email us written testimony after the hearing. I should note that this public hearing will follow public meeting laws and regulations. So as for who we are, the Division of Financial Regulation protects consumers and regulates insurance, depository institutions such as banks and credit unions, trust companies, securities, and consumer financial products and services. It also administers the Drug Price Transparency Program and provides staff support for the Prescription Drug Affordability Board. The Division is part of the Department of Consumer and Business Services, which is Oregon's largest consumer protection agency. During today's hearing, we'll be sharing information about the Drug Price Transparency Program, which was created by the 2018 Prescription Drug Price Transparency Act. We'll also discuss details from the program's 2022 Annual Report, which is available on our website. You're going to hear today from several panelists on insulin prices and the impact those prices have on consumers. We've also invited panelists to discuss pharmaceutical supply chain and pharmacy benefit manager, PBM, rebate transparency. Most importantly, however, before this hearing, we reached out to Oregonians and asked them to send us their stories about prescription drug pricing. Here are a few that we received from consumers. One person shared, quote, "We have insurance through my husband's work. Most of the time, we utilize GoodRx for our prescription drugs because of the cost savings compared to our pharmacy benefits we receive from our insurance. All of our prescriptions have increased in price anywhere from $20 per prescription to as much as $300. The largest increase we experienced was for our daughter's EpiPen. The price was so expensive for an EpiPen that we were unable to refill a prescription. I believe that without government regulations in place to keep medications affordable for middle-class working Americans, the cost of drugs will only continue to rise." Another person shared that my concern/ complaint is with the initial price for a drug named Tibsovo. I have AML and take it along with chemo. The drug retails for $37,000 a month. I'm retired, and thank God I have insurance, which to this point has been taken care of most of the expense. I'm lucky. Some folks don't have insurance, and not being able to afford it, to put it bluntly, just die. Finally, one consumer shared how they suffer from several conditions, are retired, and are Medicare. As they told us, without the psoriatic arthritis medication, I would literally be bedridden and possibly asking my doctor to allow me to end my life under Oregon law. My arthritis is really intolerable from the pain and skin perspective. The treatments are biologic and very expensive. Even after treatment, I spend a lot of days in bed. I'm in pain 24/7. The point is, a lot of the programs the drug companies provide patients are often not available to Medicare patients, and the rules that were put in place are ridiculous. I could see a future where I can't afford my medications at all. So these are just a few of the heartbreaking, real-life stories showing the difficult issues Oregonians are facing and why this program exists. So before inviting Ralph Maghrish, who's the Executive Director of our new Prescription Drug Affordability Board, to share a few words, I want to mention, as I have each year, that the lawsuit filed by the Pharmaceutical Research and Manufacturers of America, Pharma, in federal court seeking to invalidate the laws that authorize this program remains pending. We've submitted all briefs for a motion for partial summary judgment related to House Bill 4005 and await the court's decision. The portion of the case related to House Bill 2658 was stayed pending a decision from a similar California case. The Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals recently held that Pharma's challenge to California's price increase advance notice law required discovery. In response, Pharma voluntarily dismissed its case against California. Pharma is now pursuing its claim against Oregon's advanced notice law. We cannot comment further about the ongoing lawsuit, but remain disappointed that they decided to challenge these laws designed to provide transparency and help Oregonians better understand why drug prices are rising. With that, we turn it over to Ralph Maghrish to talk about Oregon's Prescription Drug Affordability Board and its upcoming reports.
Thank you, Andrew. Hello, I am Ralph Maghrish. I am the Executive Director of the Oregon Prescription Drug Affordability Board, and I also manage the Drug Price Transparency Program. I use he/his pronouns. Just a few brief words about the Drug Affordability Board. The five-member, three-alternate-member board was formed under Senate Bill 844 of the 2021 legislative session and started meeting in June in this year. We are working on three reports that the board will publish later this month. The first of those is a study of the U.S. generic drug marketplace. The second is a report on price trends for certain prescription drugs with recommendations to the legislature to make prescription drugs more affordable. And finally, the third report is the board's study of the entirety of Oregon's prescription drug distribution and payment system with recommendations to the legislature to lower the price of prescription drugs sold in Oregon. The board will be reviewing and approving all of these at its December 14 meeting for submission to the legislature. You can also find all of the board's meetings, activities, and information on its website. Lastly, I want to express gratitude and collective appreciation from our team to all of the people who are willing to and have come forward to share their stories today, to our panelists, and to our moderators. And thank you all for joining us today. And back to you, Andrew. Thank you.
Thank you, Ralph. So I'll again serve as a facilitator for this public hearing. We're also fortunate to have several legislators with us to help moderate questions and discussions as we go along. I'll let each of them introduce themselves and provide a brief statement. And perhaps we can start with the architect of this program, Representative Rob Nips.
Thank you, Director Stolfi. It's nice to be here with all of you and other members of the panel and the public. This has come a long way, and I always like to say that it's nice to watch the governor and the agency take credit for a bill that you pass, and I look forward to the report and the findings and continued work in this space. So delighted to be here.
Good morning. I'm Senator Deb Patterson, and I am just thrilled to have had a chance to read the report. The reports that are online. Look forward to the upcoming reports. Hard to believe this is year four already. Really exciting that this is disappointing, that there are lawsuits when we are hoping to work together with Pharma to make sure that everyone has access to the life-improving and life-saving pharmaceuticals that they're making. I would like to do a shout-out also to Representative Rachel Prusak, who is also joining us as a listening in today. She and I worked together as chief sponsors of Senate Bill 844. Representative Noz was real active in that, too. I'm really happy to see things moving forward so quickly. DCBS is doing a wonderful job in helping to in listening to the voices of Oregonians who are speaking up for themselves and for their neighbors and responding in such a proactive manner. I really look forward to this report today, and thank you for all the participation of everyone here.
Thank you, Senator. Thank you, Representative. I know Representative Noble slated to be with us might be having technical difficulties. Let me see if Representative Noble's not here right now.
I made it.
Oh, yeah. Great.
I was joining just as you were ready to go live. So my name's Ron Noble. I'm thrilled to be here. I just, this is, this was probably my first strong bipartisan legislation. Very glad to join Rob Noz and a couple of us in this legislation. And I've been very pleased with the progress that we've made so far. I take a different view since we kind of knew that we would have lawsuits because there were lawsuits in other states with similar type legislation. So I'm just hopeful that we will continue to work on transparency and effectively provide better access and...
We might have lost Representative Noble there for a moment, but very glad to have the three of you with us. I'm sure he'll join just as soon as he can. Okay. Well, thank you again to our legislators for joining. We really appreciate each of you joining. Appreciate the roles you've played in these programs, getting them up and running and supporting them as they exist, as well as having you help moderate this year's hearing. So first up on the agenda will be the department's presentation, followed then by the first public comment period. Then we have invited panels on our topics of insulin prices and pharmaceutical supply chain and PBM rebate transparency. After the presentations for each topic, there will be time for the moderators to discuss the topic and ask questions. At the end of the hearing, we'll have another public comment period. So another reminder, and I'll keep reminding everyone, please, if you'd like to join the public comment period, please sign up using the chat function so that we can get you on the list, if you, again, if you want to provide comments during today's hearing. Okay, so you can see there on the screen that the names are agency staff who are going to provide information about our program as well as our report. So a pleasure to turn things over to Sophie.
Thank you, Andrew. Hello, everyone, and thank you all for your participation today. I am Sophia Para. I use she/her pronouns, and I'm the Program Coordinator for Oregon's Drug Price Transparency Program. I will give you some information about the program, and then NuMe will take you through highlights and policy recommendations from our 2022 Annual Report to the Oregon Legislature. That report and the slides for today's hearing are posted on the Drug Price Transparency website. We will also add the recording of today's hearings and written comments as well. The Prescription Drug Price Transparency Act created the Drug Price Transparency Program. Oregon laws give the program authority to require reports from certain manufacturers and require them to pay annual fees to cover the costs of the program. A prescription drug manufacturers who meet the definition as shown on the slide of a reporting manufacturer are those who are required to participate in our program. Not all drug manufacturers meet this definition, like those who make treatments that are not part of the definition of prescription drugs or those who maybe manufacture for a different company, and it would be the labor that would be the one required to be participating in our program. Next slide, please. I wanted to share this from our annual report. It gives you an idea of what all the different parts that are involved in the pharmaceutical supply chain. As you can see, there are many. This diagram shows an example of someone who has insurance and is getting a brand-name drug. But you know, they're, just kind of gives you an idea of how many people can be involved in a patient just trying to get their medication. Next slide, please. There are three reports that reporting manufacturers must give us. There are reports for new drugs that have a price of $670 or more on a per-month basis. Then there are annual price increase reports. And so just the simplistic definition is $100 or more for the drug for a 30-day supply and 10% annual increase. And then they have to do that annual report for us, or those are due March 15. And then there's also a 60-day price increase report for brand-name drugs. That's generally a 10%, and for generic, 25% plus, and it must also be $300 increase. They need to report to us 60 days before that increase is due to happen. And so those are those reports. We also get reports from insured once a year on the 25 most costly and most prescribed drugs, as well as the impact of the drug costs on the premium rates. And then we also ask consumers to report to us. We feel that it would be very important to get more consumer information and get them to tell us when they experience a price increase. If we can get the specific information about what a consumer is really paying for that prescription drug, that helps give us the complete picture from the manufacturer down to the consumer and what they're paying. So that specific information is really helpful to us. We also encourage consumers to share stories with us. You heard Andrew share some of those, and then we will also have them with our report on our... We also do have them with our report on our website. If you know anyone who has experienced a price increase, please encourage them to fill out our online form. And we also have another language, or you can call us. Next slide, please. Can I get the next slide, please? Thanks. Appreciate it. When a report is filed, we send a request for information letter because quite often there are reports that have incomplete information. It's not sufficient for what they're required to report. And we have to have a process in place when we either don't get a response to the request for information, or we don't, or it's still insufficient filing. And so we have started issuing non-compliance letters. This gives the manufacturer 30 days to become compliant and provide us with that missing information and clarify, help us understand exactly what's going on and why they are doing this price increase. And we give some examples in our report, too, of the responses that we get and the explanations we get for why they're increasing their price or what they're spending on marketing for a new drug. For those who do not come into compliance, we will refer them to our agency's enforcement unit, and civil penalties can be imposed at that point. We are also reviewing trade secret claims. That's one thing you'll notice if you go and look at the data on our website is that we only show information that is either not claimed as a trade secret or, once we do a determination and determine that it is not a trade secret, then we will publish it at that time as well. So we're reviewing these, and there are several data elements where a manufacturer can make this claim and say that it's a trade secret to give you an idea of the quantity. Since the program began, we have received over 1,500 reports with over 9,000 data elements claimed as trade secret. As we review these, we will send determination notices when we disagree with them. And then, once the appeal process is resolved, we will publish anything that we deem as not trade secret. Next slide, please. This is just a kind of reminder that we have our transparency site. So you can see those price increases that the consumers have reported on our report. You can see the stories. We have questions, and we try to do outreach as well for consumers to help them understand what's available to them. You can see the reported data from manufacturers that's not trade secret. You can see information from insurers and, like I said, the consumer reports. So we just wanted to make sure that you're aware of what you can look up on there. If you have trouble finding something, just send us an email, and we'll help you understand exactly what we have available to us that you can review. Next slide, please. Okay, and we started collecting some additional information from insurers, and we just wanted to kind of make you aware of that. NuMe will talk about what we have in our report, but I just wanted to have this list here of some information that we're trying to collect, getting more information about exactly what's being paid, how rebates are involved, and then having that broken out by market and insurer. So here is NuMe to share data and recommendations from this year's report. Next slide, please.
Good morning, everybody. I'm NuMe, Ray Field Griffiths. I use she/her pronouns, and I'm Senior Policy Advisor with the Division of Financial Regulation. So I'm going to move through this fairly quickly. There's a lot of information here, and hopefully we'll have a little bit of time for questions after that, so we can revisit anything. But to kind of jump in, here's some of the key findings of our report this year. We had 193 new high-cost drug reports, 121 generic, 121, 72 branded. The highest prices reported were both for CAR-T therapies produced by Bristol-Myers Squibb at around $400,000 for the 30-day or less supply. We had 71 reported annual price increases. Most of those were generic. Largest increase was for generic, actually, a 778% increase for generic. And the average increases were 27% for generic reports and 13% for branded drugs. We had 10 insurers reporting information to the program this year. The most expensive drug reported for this year was Humira, which has been the case for every year that the program has been collecting data with $93 million claims reported across 19,000 prescriptions. A 7.4% price increase in Humira led to about $1.4 billion in additional spending nationally. Next slide, please. So this is reflecting some data from the Kaiser Family Foundation, which we've included, basically reflecting some of how high costs for drugs can really impact consumers. That around 3 in 10 consumers say that they haven't taken their medicine as prescribed due to costs. There's 18% of respondents reported not filling a prescription due to the cost, taking an over-the-counter alternative, cutting pills in half or skipping doses, which, as I'm sure you're aware, can be potentially hazardous with some things. I know there's been news stories out there about people reducing their insulin dose or skipping their insulin dose, and that sometimes leads to death of a patient. Next slide, please. This graph is showing national data on total expenditure on prescription drugs in the United States. That has continued to increase over the last decade, going from around $300 million in 2014 and approaching $400 billion. Excuse me, billion was a B in 2020, which is the last date, the last year that we have data for this particular chart. Next slide, please. So now getting a little bit into the data that we have collected over the four years of operation of the program. This graph is showing annual price increase reports. And so as a reminder, that is on price increases of 10% or more and only on drugs that have a list price of $100 or more for a 30-day supply. As you can see throughout the life of the program, we have seen fewer price increase reports every year, 2022 being the lowest, 57 branded reports, 45 generic reports, which is a massive, massive decrease from what we saw in 2019, which is around 550 reports, mostly branded. So there has been this trend in reduced price increases, and that's something that is consistent with national data as well. What I would remind you, though, is that this doesn't necessarily mean the price increases have stopped. It means that there are fewer price increases of 10% or more, and that a number of companies have taken the practice of basically limiting their price increases to, say, 9.7%. So we're not capturing any of those since they don't actually hit our reporting threshold. Next slide, please. In contrast to that, we've seen a continuous, a fairly steady increase in new prescription drug reports. Looks like the caption was... I believe that is a typo on my account. Anyway, this graph reflects new drug reports for high-cost specialty drugs, and we've seen a steady increase throughout the life of the program in new drug reports. This is really reflecting something that we also see in national data, which has been a general shift away from a sort of business model where a drug is introduced at a relatively competitive, lower price, and then the price of the drug is increased over time throughout the life cycle of drugs patented to recapture the sort of revenue that the drug company is looking to recoup. And instead, that drug companies have started to start with a higher launch price and have fewer price increases throughout the life of the drug. So these two things, phenomenons taken together, higher launch prices, as you can see here, lower, fewer and smaller price increases, as we saw on the previous slide, combined to kind of even out that even though we've seen a change in manufacturer behavior, we haven't necessarily seen an overall drop in the way that the United States is paying for prescription drugs. And go back and think about that slide showing overall prescription drug spending in new rise. Just because we're seeing fewer price increases doesn't mean we're not seeing higher costs for prescription drugs. Next. So this is showing the distribution of drugs across different therapeutic classes for those high-cost drug reports. As has been the case in previous years, by far, the most high-cost new drugs are reported in the antineoplastics and adjunctive therapies classification, which is a lot of words, so we'll just say that those are things that are associated with the treatment of cancer. Fairly unsurprising, I think, that cancer remains an area where there's a lot of research, and there aren't necessarily a lot of good treatment options for a lot of people. So it is an area where we still see new drugs coming in, being increasingly specialized for more and more specific types of cancer with those smaller patient populations having correspondingly higher launch prices. Next slide, please. This is kind of moving back to some of the information that we collect for price increase reports. And this is showing, since for price increase reports, we collect fairly granular data on the actual direct costs related to a particular drug for a manufacturer. But we collect data on four different categories of direct spending: manufacturing, marketing, distribution, and safety and effectiveness research. These two charts are specifically comparing how those reports differ between brand-name drugs on the left side of the slide and generic drugs on the right side of the slide. So for branded drugs, you see about half the cost going to manufacturing, about a quarter of the cost going to marketing, 10% or so going to safety and effectiveness research. So ongoing research after a drug has already been approved, and then 20% going to distribution. With respect to generic drugs, almost all of the direct costs are associated with manufacturing with very, very little spending going towards marketing. You shouldn't have no, no, no cost reported related to safety and effectiveness. So that really goes to show kind of one of the big reasons why, once a generic competitor is available to a given drug, they are able to offer such a significant discount relative to where the brand was priced. Next, please. So now we're getting into some new data that we have not gotten in previous years. This is reflective of our insurer reports for this year. And this is specifically showing across the nine reporting insurers, which are insurers that our insurer reports are associated with our rate filing process. And right now, we require rates to be filed only for the individual and small group market. So this doesn't reflect large employers. It doesn't, for the most part, reflect Medicaid, Medicare, or PEB, OEB, et cetera. We do receive some voluntary reports for those market segments, but for the most part, this is just the individual and small group market, and that really only reflects, say, for all the data we collect, including those voluntary reports on Medicaid, PEB, OEB, it's around a third of the total insured population. Now, this is a partial picture, but it's a large enough sample that we really think that it can provide a lot of insight into how the market, insurance market is working overall. This slide is showing the percent of premium collected that a insurance company spent on prescription drug claims in the previous calendar year. So reports received in 2022 reflect the calendar year 2021. Kaiser had the lowest percent spent on prescription drugs, and Bridgespan had the highest, by far, reporting around 65% of premium collected being spent on prescription drugs. I'm going to emphasize that, that is 65% of every dollar collected in premium by Bridgespan went to prescription drugs. And I'm not going to go into precise detail on the patient population this is related to, but this is due to a, basically, almost entirely due to a single drug with a very, very small patient population driving almost all of that spending for Bridgespan. Next slide, please. So this is looking at the same data in a slightly different way, showing the... So the total, 100% here is the total amount that the company spent on prescription drugs, rather than the total premium collected. So it's not reflecting other medical services. This is just the prescription drugs. And showing how that is divided between non-specialty generic, non-specialty brand, and specialty-tier drugs, which, for our purposes, we're continuing to classify as those drugs with a $670 or more price for a 30-day or less supply. You can see over on the right side, Bridgespan, 93% of the prescription drug spend on specialty drugs. And that is reflecting the same thing that I just mentioned, very small patient population with a very, very high-cost drug. The other thing I think that you can reflect here is that the companies that spent less on specialty drugs are also associated with those that spent less on drugs overall. And that is really reflective of the fact that most of the cost of prescription drugs is being driven by specialty drugs. The vast majority of prescriptions are for generics, and those are actually a significant minority of the cost of drugs being spent on. Next slide, please. Uh, next slide, please. So this is, uh, showing how, uh, consumer cost sharing is reflected between different, uh, categories of insurance. Uh, so individual, small group, and large group. You can see that individual plans are spending the most, uh, and that is in terms of both, uh, the, um, both the total amount that the plan is spending on prescription drugs, as well as the amount of cost sharing that's applied. Uh, on the left side, that is showing the per member per month figures for share of, uh, share of spend on prescription drugs by the plan and by the member in the form of co-pay or co-insurance. Uh, and then the right side is showing basically the same data as a percent. Uh, so showing that the difference of percentage is smaller, but still large group members are paying the lowest and small group and individual are kind of around the same. But because individual insurance enrollees are having a higher negotiated price paid by the drug company, even though the percentage comparable to small group, they are paying significantly more for the drugs out of pocket. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, this is showing some new data that we collected this year on rebates as reported by insurers, showing the percentage of, uh, percentage of rebates received as a percent, uh, showing rebates received as a percentage of the total drug spending by each of the reporting plans. So we have Health Net and United over on the left side, having the most received in rebates relative to total costs, around 20%. And then Kaiser and Moda were on the right side, receiving less than 10% in rebates relative to total prescription drug costs. Though I'd remind you, of course, that both Kaiser and Moda are, uh, companies that in our reports had relatively low drug spending. So less rebates received doesn't necessarily mean higher costs overall. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, this is getting into some of our most prescribed, uh, lists for, uh, prescription drugs for the plan year 2021. Uh, I think unsurprisingly, the COVID-19 virus vaccine, uh, the mRNA variants produced by Moderna and Pfizer were the most prescribed by far. Uh, and that's pretty unsurprising since if you remember that was back when we were in sort of the early rollout of the vaccines in, uh, 2021, uh, with 537,000, uh, prescriptions for COVID-19 vaccine reported from our a reporting sample that obviously doesn't reflect the other markets that I mentioned, uh, followed by flu vaccines, and then pretty much everything else is more or less what you could expect for a typical year with, uh, lots of prescriptions for Lipitor, thyroid agents, things that we have seen in the past. So this is going to be a bit of a blip. We think that, uh, we'll have this large number of reports for COVID vaccines for this year, and that that's going to go down to, uh, more steady state level in the future. Next slide, please. So this is reflecting, uh, most costly prescription drugs. Um, there's only going to be a couple of things I call out on this. We're not going to walk through the entire list here. Humira, again, uh, most, uh, most costly drug for insurance plans and last year, same, same, uh, case as every previous year that we've had received reports, uh, with its sort of most closely related competitors in the same kind of category, Slara, Embra, which are all kind of treating the same general milieu of, uh, inflammatory autoimmune diseases being the next highest. Uh, I think the interesting thing here is that in 2023, this coming year, Humira is actually going to see its first effective generic competition as, uh, as biosimilars start to get released onto the market. Um, I think that's kind of important to note that, uh, Humira has, uh, been protected effectively by patents longer than it should have been in some ways. Uh, some people may say that with all this sort of secondary patents that AbbVie acquired for Humira, they were able to kind of push back generic competition for a number of years a, in America as compared to say Europe where biosimilars have been available for twelve years and patients have been able to purchase those at a lower price. So, um, I'm going to be very interested to see what happens with spending on Humira in the next three years. Unfortunately, because our data is delayed by a year, we won't see that market effect until, uh, our report in 2024. So be tuned and come back for that, but, uh, that's, uh, going to be something interesting to watch out for. Uh, next slide, please. This, uh, chart is showing the drugs that drove the largest increase in plan spending. Uh, again, I'll call out the COVID-19 mRNA vic, that, uh, virus vaccines with a $17 million increase in spending reported by our reporting insurers. Uh, that's fairly unsurprising since it's, uh, an increase from zero effectively. Uh, so that's why that's there. Uh, and again, we'll probably see that kind of fade out of this chart in the future. Um, beyond that, there's something, uh, in, in previous years, most of the things that have appeared on this equivalent chart have been newly introduced, especially. And that really isn't the case here that we're seeing, other than the car COVID-19 vaccine, we're not seeing a lot of new drugs in this chart. So the rest of the list is pretty much all just price increases driven. Uh, increased spending driven by price increases on existing drugs, whereas in previous years, a lot of what we saw was the introduction of new high cost specialty drugs, uh, since, and price increase for, uh, spending increased from zero to whatever end up, ends up being, that's what shows up on this list. And that really reflects a period of time during pandemic when we didn't see a lot of new drug launches. Um, so a, a bit of an anomaly, but, uh, again, we'll see where things go in the future as market for developing new drugs gets a little back to normal. Uh, next slide, please. A few policy recommendations that we have in our report for this year. Uh, we're recommending increased transparency around patient assistance programs. Right now we do collect data on those, but only for, as part of our, uh, annual price increase reports. We think that that should go out farther. And so we were, we're, uh, recommending separating that patient assistance program report from, uh, the price increase reports and just requiring manufacturers to report on all patient assistance programs that they operate in the previous calendar year, regardless of whether there was a price increase or a new drug increase. Um, we're recommending expanding insurer reporting to additional markets, uh, so that we're able to get a much better picture of the overall insurance market. I kept on saying, our current sample is only individual and small group, and that doesn't get you very far. So we're looking to kind of push that out to large group and everybody else under our authority so that we can get a much more comprehensive picture in our insurer data. Um, we're recommending requiring transparency for other supply chain entities, if this PBMs. Um, that's been something that state has been recommending back to the, uh, task force on fair pricing of prescription drugs that really to get things like data on rebates, you want that information from multiple parties so you can cross check. So, uh, more specifically, we're recommending, uh, aggregated reporting requirements on rebates for PBMs. Uh, we're recommending that the legislature consider, uh, implementation of upper payment and limit authority for the prescription drug affordability board, really to explore opportunities for the next steps for the board to take effect now that we've got it set up. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, we are recommending, uh, to the legislature, study feasibility of state generic manufacturing and expandable purchasing. I think that's been something that's been attention that California is actually exploring, uh, doing their own generic manufacturing. And obviously we're not California as Oregon, but, uh, I, I think there's still potential there for us to kind of explore, uh, manufacturing directly or manufacturing effectively as a relate, relabeler, which is basically what California is doing. Um, as well as looking at sort of additional avenues for bulk purchasing. Uh, right now, of course, we have a Ray RX, formerly known as the, uh, OPDP program. Um, and, and kind of exploring other options around their, if, uh, uniform drug list for all state, state programs and PBM services, or establishing a centralized office of pharmacy purchasing for coordination across all state purchasing. Uh, we're recommending protection of consumer information reported to DPT. Uh, we'd like to be able to, uh, collect contact information, among other things, uh, for people, but protect that from disclosure, protect that from public records so that we can better leverage consumer reports. Cause right now it's kind of, we receive the information and then we're not able to, uh, reach out for follow-up or anything like that. So, uh, we, we'd like to be able to better leverage our consumer reports, but we want to be able to protect, uh, protect sensitive info, consumer information when we do so. And last, we are recommending, uh, sharing prescription drug data between state agencies that are working on prescription drug pricing, uh, requiring data sharing, um, since there are programs in the health authority as well as our own programs that, uh, we're really looking for and increase our synergy. Uh, and I see Andrew Beck on camera. I am wrapping up. So, uh, next slide, please. So that is the, that concludes the presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions if we have time.
Thank you so much, Nume and Sophie as well. A lot of great information shared. And point out, that's just scratching the surface of the data that we have. Our report, our annual report has a lot more information in it, as does our website. So encourage folks to go there to learn even more. So we, uh, we've got time. If our, if our moderators have, uh, a question or two of Nume or Sophie, glad to allow you to ask away. I see Senator Patterson.
Uh, just a comment, a word of thanks and, uh, thanks for all the data collected. Thanks for identifying areas where, uh, more ability to collect data and broader data would be more helpful. Um, they're just, thank you for all your work on this. I'm going to turn it over to Representative Noz because he's got his hand up. Thank you.
Hi, uh, thanks, Nume, for your report and Director Stolfi for, uh, what you're doing here today. My quick question is, what do you think is going on in the generic market, uh, that their prices? Um, I realize relative to what new brands charge are lower, but the information you're sharing makes it seem like the increases that we're seeing in the generic space in some ways relative to what they cost is more than what we're experiencing from brand drugs.
Um, uh, thanks for the press time, uh, Representative. Uh, I, I think you've kind of touched on what is going on is that new drugs that are being introduced are primarily biologics, primarily special drugs, specialty drugs. And those have much, much higher prices at launch, uh, in some cases, particularly for things like, uh, CAR-T. We saw that $400,000 figure up there at the beginning. There are CAR-T therapies that, uh, start out with list prices in the millions of dollars for a single patient. So, uh, uh, one thing that is happening, um, is, uh, and we're not quite there with getting biosimilar equivalents to CAR-T therapies yet, but we are starting to see, uh, biosimilars come out for other products, particularly monoclonal antibodies in recent years. Uh, and that is kind of a thing where if the, uh, brand name drug costs $100,000 for a patient, you know, a generic manufacturer is going to come in at price of eight. Okay. So that is one of the things that is going on is just that, um, the generic competition we're seeing is in the biosimilar category. List price is higher for the brand, list price is higher for the generic, and maybe it's going to push it down eventually to something more affordable overall. Uh, it's, it's not like these things actually cost that much to manufacture. Uh, but, uh, that, that, that is, uh, hopefully that, uh, gives some insight into that.
Senator Patterson, please.
Uh, Director Stolfi, thank you so much. Um, Nume, um, I have a question related to that again. Uh, why is the distribution so much higher? The cost for that, for branded drugs than for generic drugs? So I, I can understand marketing when they're trying, but why distribution? Thanks.
Uh, I think that's something we don't have enough information to kind of fully answer. Uh, if I could take a stab at it, I would say one thing is that the way the generic manufacturing distribution process happens is that they basically just list it to a wholesaler, gets added to the catalog. And so there's not a lot of work that has to be done on the company end to make those things happen. Um, I would say that the difference that we're seeing in that part seems bigger than that alone would explain. Uh, so, um, I, I, I don't have an answer. Unfortunately, I do know we have, uh, I believe our representative Karma in a later panelist, in one of our later panels, perhaps could provide some insight into what's going on there. But I, I, I don't have any light to shed on that.
Thanks so much, Noz.
Okay. Thank you, Nume. Thank you for those questions. I don't see any other hands up. So we're going to move on to our first public comment period. We do have two people already signed up. Uh, and encourage anyone else watching right now, if you'd like to provide any public comment, to please sign up in the chat. We do have a second public comment period at the end of the hearing. We'd be glad to put you in there. Uh, and you can see there on the screen, uh, you can also send written testimony at any time, uh, to that email address. So with that, we're going to start with our first public comment. We have Andrew Mayer from AARP Oregon.
Good morning, Director Stolfi, Representatives Noz and Noble and Senator Patterson. I'm Andrea Meyer, Director of Government Relations here at AARP Oregon, and we are pleased to provide these comments. And I've also submitted our comments in writing. AARP is the nation's largest nonprofit, nonpartisan organization dedicated to empowering Americans 50 and older to choose how they live as they age. And here in Oregon, we have over 500,000 members. Americans are frankly, are sick and tired of paying the highest drug prices in the world for critically needed medication. Americans pay three times more than other countries for the same name drugs. The prices of existing prescription drugs are growing rapidly, as you have heard. A September 2022 report by the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services noted that the list prices of more than 1,200 prescription drugs rose faster than inflation between July 1, 2021 and July 2022, rising on average over 31%. ARP Public Policy Institute's 2021 RX Watt Price Watch Report found that in 2020, prices for 180 widely used specialty prescription drugs increased by more than three and a half times faster than general inflation in 2020. The ongoing problem unnecessarily increases healthcare spending, taking money out of consumers' pockets and leading to increased government spending. Oregonians should not have to choose between buying medicine and paying for food and rent. But that is the reality for many. In Oregon, the annual cost of prescription drug treatment increased by over 26% between 2015 and 2019, while the annual income for Oregon residents only increased by 14%. So just let me give you one example, please. In 2018, over 393,000 Oregonians had been diagnosed with cancer. Rivlumid is a cancer drug that may help many of those individuals between 2015 and 2020. Its price went from 187,000 to over 267,000 per year. And this year, the, that price has now shot up to over about $294,000. This year, ARP was successful in advocating for significant prescription drug price reforms at the federal level, including giving Medicare the authority to negotiate drug prices. However, most of the impact on those reforms only affects people in Medicare. There remains much more to be done at the state level to address the high cost of prescription drugs. And in Oregon, we have made some important advances to bring transparency. But we must go further to enact meaningful reforms that will make a difference to the lives of Oregonians. Oregon should empower the recently established prescription drug affordability board, PDA, to set upper price limits on certain high-priced drugs utilizing data that is collected by the existing drug price transparency law. We believe these UPLs should be applied to all payers in the state, but even if only applied to government payers, it would reduce drug spending by government considerably. A savings analysis facilitated for Oklahoma by the National Academy of State Health Policy showed annual savings of more than 52 million for just 20 drugs purchased by state employees alone if the state set UPLs based on prices paid in Canada for the drugs. ARP also believes Oregon, Oregon should use international reference pricing using Canadian prices as a reference point to establish UPLs on drugs that the PDA determines are overpriced. Another method to set UPLs in the future would be to use the negotiate rate of drugs that Medicare establishes. This would effectively reduce state spending and if applied to all payers could lead to lower healthcare premiums and out of pocket costs for Oregonians. We also support bulk purchasing efforts, banning price gouging by drug manufacturers and preventing insurance companies from changing their formularies in the middle of the plan year that cause an increase out of pocket costs for other or other negative effects to the consumer. We appreciate the opportunity to provide comments today, and ARP stands ready to join with others in addressing the high cost of prescription drugs so many of our members, and indeed all Oregonians face in making very tough decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Meyer, very much for your comments and for highlighting those issues. Uh, so next we have Robin Jenkins, consumer, signed up to testify. Robin, floor is yours.
Good morning. Um, my name is Robin and I'm from Dallas, Oregon. Last year, uh, doctors and I were diagnosing my stomach issues. I was prescribed medication to alleviate pain that was at times so I was prescribed medication to alleviate pain that was at times so severe that I was unable to do basic daily activities. When I filled the prescription, I was shocked to see that the price was $1,000 for a pill that I had to take four times a day. I'm a seasonal worker and am typically unemployed for several months during winter, so I rely on OHP for health insurance. I was incredibly fortunate that this medicine, medicine was covered because it would have been impossible for me to afford that unreasonable cost otherwise. Others may not be so fortunate. Oregonians are counting on you to please lower prescription drug prices. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Robin, for sharing your story. It's very important for folks to hear that. Thank you. Okay, um, so I know we've got uh, one other person signed up. We've got a public comment period at the end of the hearing, and we've got one person signed up for that already. If you, if you'd like, again, if you'd like to uh, join uh, that public comment period, just uh, tell us in the chat that you would like to uh, testify at the end of the hearing, uh, provide some comments, provide some feedback, and provide your name so we can call on you. Okay, thank you. So with that, we're going to move on to our uh, first panel. Uh, and that's a discussion on insulin prices and the impact these prices have on consumers. So the increasing cost of insulin and expensive new insulin-like drugs continue to be a noteworthy area in prescription drug pricing, especially considering this life-saving medication is needed by almost 400,000 Oregonians. So we're going to have a great panel of presenters, and then after they've all spoken, we'll have some time for some discussion. So presenters, please try to keep your presentations to around five to seven minutes and let our staff know when you're ready to proceed to the next slide. We'll ask all of you to be available for questions and discussion with our moderators after you've all gone. With that, first, I'm going to turn things over to Chris.
Yes, thank you. Good morning to everyone. Uh, my name is Chris Viasio. I am a policy associate with the National Academy for State Health Policy, or NASHPEE. Uh, for those who don't know, NASHPEE is a nonprofit, nonpartisan, or a form of policymakers committed to developing and advancing state health policy innovations and solutions. We have been active in the area of prescription drug policy, developing model legislation focused on uh, areas ranging from unsupported price increases, reference-based pricing, and prescription drug affordability boards. And today I'm going to present on policy options to promote insulin affordability and access for states. Uh, next slide, please. So this slide just really demonstrates what a critical issue this is for states, for so many states, and how they've really led the way. Um, Colorado was the first state to enact a cap on cost sharing for insulin products in 2019. And since then, we've seen rapid progress across the United States. Uh, more than 20 states now have such a cap. Um, California is pursuing a novel uh, approach of, of uh, state uh, in-state manufacturing and has committed a hundred million dollars to that in its next budget. And I wanted to give a call out for the Wa, for the state of Washington, which has established an insulin affordability group, which has been meeting regularly, trying to devise purchasing strategies to reduce the cost and total expenditures on insulins for that state. And they've looked at issues ranging from in-state manufacturing, white labeling, public health distributors, leveraging existing discount card infrastructure. Uh, so I'm, we're, we're going to be following that uh, their work closely. Uh, next slide, please. So why is it such a big issue? We have more than 37 million Americans, you know, more, excuse me, more than 37 million Americans have uh, have diabetes. About 31% take insulin to manage the condition. In Oregon alone, we have somewhere between 320,000 to 400,000 uh, Oregonians uh, who are suffering from, from diabetes. And about 6% of the state of Oregon is uninsured, and they're feeling that, that, that pain every time they go to the, to the counter. Now, despite being discovered more than a century ago, we are seeing insulin prices continue to rise, like tripling in the last decade. Uh, and this is creating affordability challenges for patients. Uh, it is creating issues with adherence and worsening health outcomes, and it is straining state and local budgets. And so states have been employing different strategies to kind of improve affordability and ensure uh, their, their residents have access. And I'm going to focus on three popular ones. That is a cap on cost sharing requirements, emergency access and safety net programs, and state-directed or contracted manufacturing of insulin. Uh, next slide, please. Right, so the first one is the limit on cost sharing, and this is the state using its regulatory authority over carriers to influence plan design and direct insurers to cap cost sharing requirements. And if this sounds familiar, this was a big provision in the Inflation Reduction Act. It originally was going to cap uh, insulin uh, out of cost sharing requirements to $35 per month for all commercial plans, private plans. Uh, that is since was, that was uh, pared back to just Medicare due to Senate rules. Um, but again, states have been leading the way, so it, the, the effect was, was not as uh, it was a little blunted. I mean, we have 22 states that implemented such a cap ranging between 135 dollars. Some states have gone back to actually lower their cap after implementing a cap. The state of Oregon has a price cap for $75 for a 30-day supply or $225 for a 90-day supply. Um, I do want to uh, emphasize though, this is for, this policy benefits those that have insurance. And why is it such a, a popular policy? It's providing relief at the point of purchase, where we're hearing so many patients talk about their affordability challenges. You know, when you hear people talk about affordability, that's what they're talking about, when they're, when they're actually purchasing the drug. Now, if you work in a space, you know, this is, this is a bigger picture than just at the point of purchase, but it is still a critical issue, and it's providing acute relief to these patients. Um, but now additional strategies will likely be needed in this for the uninsured population and the underinsured, as well as ERISA beneficiaries, where states really uh, aren't allowed to touch the uh, plan design. Uh, is other, other strategies will also be need to, will be needed to address the more root cause, which is the rising insulin prices. Uh, next slide, please. The next strategy is uh, the Emergency Access and Safety Net Programs, and this is a sort of a two-pronged approach. So the one is the Emergency Access Supply of Insulin, which gives you insulin for about 30-day supply. And then the other one is a more stable, long-term supply for those who are under, on or underinsured, and provides an affordable, stable supply for, for uh, for program enrollees. Now, four states have both of these prongs, at least four states have both of these prongs enacted, and that's Colorado, Connecticut, Maine, and Minnesota. Utah has a similar program called the Insulin Savings Program. It's a little different because there's no uh, requirement that manufacturers provide the insulin. But what they're doing is they're leveraging their state health employee plan to allow consumers to purchase insulin at a post rebate price. Um, uh, but there is no emergency access uh, component to that plan. So emergency access, what does that mean? It is a one-time 30-day supply at a cap co-pay, an affordable cap co-pay. It can be needs-based or without an application. States uh, typically allow uh, to renew this emergency supply maybe once or twice, but there is a cap. Um, and manufacturers are required to either refund the pharmacy or replace the supply. In the first year of this program, Minnesota, uh, over 220 people use the uh, use, uh, were able to get insulin in a time of urgent need. Uh, next slide, please. The other prong is the continuing need, oh, I'm sorry, the long, the long-term need prong, and I have here for the Minnesota's Continuing Need Program. Now, this requires manufacturers to provide insulin to eligible individuals for up to a year, options to uh, to renew after the year. Um, it is typically needs-based and requires patients to fill out an application to access the program. And I just want to flag that these, these programs have been challenged by manufacturers as unconstitutional takings. For instance, Minnesota's was challenged uh, the day before it was going to go into effect. Um, they've, the, the law is currently in effect. The state was successful at the district court level. Uh, the manufacturers have appealed that decision to the Eighth Circuit. I, from my most, most recent research, I don't believe they've reached a verdict in that case or decision, excuse me. Uh, next slide, please. And then, uh, last but not least, we have our most novel uh, of strategies, and this is the state-directed manufacturing of insulin. Um, the Calarex Initiative, which I've referenced in that first slide, is empowering the state to develop generic drugs, and the first one they're going to target is insulin. Um, that's just some, some progress on that front. Uh, they have, of that hundred million dollars, 50 million has been earmarked to allow the state and its private partner, whoever they're going to uh, partner with, to get insulin on the state's market as quickly as possible, possibly as early as 2020, as early 2024. Um, according to media reports, they are expected to partner with uh, Civica. Uh, that's as much as I know. Um, but that is a recurring theme we're hearing from states, that they are interested in possibly working with Civica. They're following their progress closely, interested in partnering with the organization to provide uh, uh, either state-directed uh, manufacturing, or to provide uh, uh, drugs to their non-Medicate populations. Other states are also interested in this uh, this policy. Uh, Governor Whitmer of Mi, of Michigan recently signed an executive order for that state to study whether it should adopt a similar program. And the state of Maine recently passed legislation to create a commission to uh, study the program as well, if they could adopt it. Um, now, direct state investment in manufacturing uh, insulin and other drug products is a novel strategy. It comes with its own challenges. And so we are really excited to see California, or we're really, we're excited to see where California goes with this and to follow the progress uh, closely. Uh, next slide, please. And yes, that's it. So thank you so much for your time uh, and this opportunity to present to you all. Uh, if you have any questions, please feel free to contact myself or Jennifer Rec, who is the director for uh, director for the Center for Drug Pricing at NASHPEE, and I've also provided links to our legislative tracker, which includes uh, um, uh, insulin-focused uh, legislation, our uh, model legislation uh, page, which includes links to our Prescription Drug Affordability Board and reference-based pricings uh, uh, model legislations, as well as a recent article we, we uh, we wrote, talking about opportunities for states after the Inflation Reduction Act. And uh, thank you so much.
Thank you, Chris. Uh, please hang on. We're going to move to questions after all the panelists get to go, and we're going to go next to Wissam.
Hi, good morning. Thanks for inviting me to speak about insulin costs um, from a payer's perspective. Um, I'm a clinical pharmacist at Regions, and I support our employer groups, um, their employees and their families, and I'm happy to participate in the panel today. Next slide, please. I thought we'd start with reviewing, reviewing why insulin prices have remained high for a number of years for members and payers. Um, many might not know that insulin's actually a biologic medication, which essentially means that it's a complex molecule that's made from living cells. Therefore, even though insulin has been on the market, the first insulin was approved 40 years ago, there was not a pathway historically for insulin to obtain a generic uh, through the FDA. Until recently, um, as of March of 2020, um, the FDA re-categorized insulin as a biologic medication, which allows for um, biosimilars uh, to enter the market uh, to help with that. It's also important to note that biosimilars, it's a category, are still brand medications. They're not generics. And so because of their complex nature, those medications will remain generally more expensive than generic medications because they're more difficult, more expensive to um, develop. Um, it has been an uphill battle for biosimilars to get on the market. Um, they had to work with the FDA to develop, to develop the pathway for approval for, to ensure its safety and efficacy um, to its innovator products, um, and then also gaining provider adoption of biosimilars and prescribing these medications. Um, uh, there has been some headway since the first biosimilar entered the market about nine years ago. Um, that was for neutropenia for low white blood cells. Um, this wasn't uh, so you know, that's great news. And now, you know, we have an established pathway for the F, for biosimilars into the market through the FDA. But the problem is that litigation continues to slow the market, market entry of these medications. Um, so you know, for the legislatures, I encourage them to continue to support legislation to encourage biosimilar and generic um, medications um, into the market. Providers are gaining more confidence with these medications. Um, they are realizing, you know, through the FDA that they are safe and effective uh, to use against the innovator products. And so this leads to more biosimilar innovations, market entry and competition to help lower those costs. And with that, payers, um, you know, or health plans are adopting these medications, biosimilars as preferred therapies over the innovator products to help lower costs for members and payers. Um, and we are seeing, you know, drug manufacturers in general are, are beginning to moderate their list price increases. Um, and that's really due to the public and legislative pressures, including this group. Next slide, please. So how are payers addressing insulin affordability? You know, at minimum, um, they are meeting the state mandates, as an example, with Oregon law. Um, insulin co-pays and cost shares are capped at $75 per month for a 30-day supply. Um, so that's one example. And even though self-funded groups are not required by this mandate to put a cap, several of our groups have actually adopted this mandate for their employees and their families. Um, that we offer um, other benefit designs. They're actually more rich than that to help, you know, bypass deductibles and lower co-pays um, for drug lists that include insulin for chronic conditions. Um, also, health plans are starting to move biosimilars as preferred agents. If the price of that medication is better than, or at least equivalent to innovator products, to help promote these uh, medications into the market. In fact, the first biosimilar interchangeable medication called Sembly, um, it's uh, uh, the first biosimilar for Lantus, which is a long-acting insulin, very popular medication, was the first to come to market late last year in 2021. So in fact, we actually put that medication as our preferred product for members, um, starting of 2022, and moved um, over 95% of our population to that medication um, in the first quarter. However, that requires really a robust member and provider communication plan, and also communication and working with the manufacturer of those products because we're dealing with large populations that take these medications, and we want to make sure that we have supply, you know, that they can meet our supply to move such populations to these uh, medications. Next slide, please. So to conclude, you know, this is a great start to helping affordability, but we still are not addressing the underlying problem. These strategies don't address the total cost of insulin to the overall health system. Um, employer groups unfortunately consume a greater burden. Um, even though we can reduce um, member cost share at the pharmacy for majority of the patients, um, unfortunately, this does lead to increased premiums uh, to the general population. And you know, insulin is just one medication that is used by the diabetes population. It doesn't address, you know, the broader overall cost of the, of the disease of diabetes and access to care. A lot of these individuals have, you know, chronic uh, comorbidities such as heart conditions and kidney disease, and on a lot more medications, but it is a great start. And that concludes uh, my presentation.
Thank you so much for that, and uh, please do hang on for questions at the end. And next, we've got Mary Beth Guarano from Osperg.
Thanks, Andrew. Um, yep, my name is Mary Beth Guarino. I'm the healthcare advocate at Osperg. We're a consumer advocacy organization that works to uh, push for policies that make our world a healthier and safer place, including lower prescription drug prices. Next slide. Uh, I want to share a couple stories with you about um, some folks we've talked to who have uh, and are reliant on insulin. Um, first up is Cameron. He's a young man who was diagnosed at 13 with type 1 diabetes. And he has had to ration his meals in order to ration his insulin, um, because he was concerned he wouldn't have enough to pay for the next month. Um, he's still, despite uh, having moved out and um, working forty-plus hours a week, still on occasion reliant on his parents to help pay for his insulin. And in his words, it's terrifying, knowing that he works sometimes 56 hours a week and still can't afford his medication for himself. Next slide. Riley also shared their story with us. Um, they have two sisters that also have type 1 diabetes that were diagnosed even younger at age three um, and have been on insulin for more than 20 years. Um, and are looking forward to a long life of paying for insulin. Um, it costs about $4 to make the version that they're on, but they are charged $300 for each month's supply. And with two people on it, it only lasts them about two weeks. So they're paying $300 multiple times a month, um, and they have been for the last 20 years. Next slide. So let's break down those numbers and do some quick math, right? So every year, if you're paying, this is just for one person, $300 a month for 12 months in the year, you're paying $3,600 a year. And this does not account for health insurance premiums. It doesn't account for any other healthcare needs if you break your arm or have to go to the, the emergency room. Um, or if you have an ambulance ride, or any other uh, myriad of things that happen in our day-to-day lives that might require you to pay healthcare costs. Um, I have useful, the uh, life expectancy of about 75 years. Um, so assuming that you were diagnosed at 13 like Cameron, if you're paying $3,600 a year, you're paying over $200,000 during the course of your lifetime. Um, and this is not accounting for inflation and the rising Um and this is not accounting for inflation and the rising cost of healthcare and insulin prices. These are just insane amounts of money and we shouldn't be requiring twenty-year-olds, twenty-four-year-olds, anyone to be paying these costs for a life-saving medication. Next slide. As we've talked about a little bit today, we've made some recent progress. We have a prescription drug affordability board which has the capacity and is directed to review the affordability of at least one insulin product every year. Um this is a great start. We'd like to see more of this. Um and the prescription drug affordability board also reviews the affordability of other drugs, which is fantastic. And as um previous presenters have mentioned, there is also in Oregon, a monthly insulin co-pay cap. For the individual market and then the Inflation Reduction Act in the federal level caps monthly insulin co-pays for Medicare. So we have started to make some recent progress for consumer cost sharing. Um but as previously mentioned, this doesn't necessarily address the total cost of care um or the underlying costs for why these prices are rising. Next slide. So a couple of things that we can do, and some of these have already been mentioned, so I won't spend too much time on those. But we can empower entities to actually lower costs rather than just having a prescription drug affordability board review what drugs are costing and how much more it is that consumers can't afford to pay. We could actually lower those costs and have uh some empowerment there. Um there's also a lot of price gouging in the pharmaceutical pharmaceutical industry um that the prescription drug affordability board and this price transparency program does work to prevent in uh shedding some light and transparency on on the prices. But it doesn't necessarily mean that there's not price gouging going on. And so preventing and enforcing um price gouging penalties is really important. Similarly, enforcing the reporting and transparency requirements is also really important. I'm really happy to hear that there are, you know, non-compliance letters going out uh to make sure that that uh manufacturers are reporting and complying with this program, and then we should continue doing that. And then lastly, the the program, the reports that come out every year from the price transparency program make recommendations on how we can responsibly use the data that we're collecting and identifying problem areas and ways to uh, you know, know what we don't know um and continuing to try to solve this problem. Um so I think there's still more to be done, but we are making progress. And um for Cameron, for Riley and their sisters, and for thousands of Oregonians across the state, we we need to do more. Uh and that should be the end. Next slide should just be my contact information. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mary Beth, and we'll come back to you and the others for questions in a minute. We've got our last presenter. Turn things over to Alan.
Thanks, Andrew. Uh it's good to be with you. Um I'm gonna talk today about Civica's initiative to bring quality affordable insulin to market at a low and transparent price. Uh but in order to do that, let me tell you a little bit about Civica and how we got here. Um I'm Alan Cockle. I'm a pharmacist and Civic is Public Policy Lead. Next slide please. So we are a nonprofit generic drug company. Uh our mission is to make quality affordable medicines available to everyone. And to do what is in the best interest of patients. Next slide please. We were established uh four years ago to respond to a problem of chronic drug shortages. So at any given time, there are dozens or hundreds of drugs that the traditional pharmaceutical sector can't reliably supply. And a group of health systems came together to say we have to do something different, and they created Civic as a nonprofit. Uh today, we serve about fifty-five health systems, accounting for about one in three hospital beds in the country. Uh we have shipped a hundred million vials of of sterile injectable drugs, uh sixty-eight different products. Next slide please. And important to say, we have uh for all our hospital drugs, a one-price-for-all uh model. And so a rural hospital in Oregon would pay the same price for one of our drugs as a hospital chain that had two hundred hospitals uh somewhere else in the in the country. We also do a couple of other things that are different. Uh one is that we enter long-term contracts with our hospitals in order to provide price stability in the market. Uh and we emphasize US manufacturing and quality. And we actually maintain a strategic stockpile of several months' supply of drug uh so that we can ensure there's never an interruption in in supply. Um that schematic on this slide is our manufacturing facility in Petersburg, Virginia. I'm actually sitting in that facility today. Um and that has the ability to produce ninety million vials and fifty million excuse me, pre-filled syringes of medicine each year. Next slide please. So as we've been on this mission to address uh drug shortages, we've also, of course, heard about the need to address price. And so in the same way that Civic was formed in partnership with US hospitals, uh Civic script, which is our retail-facing entity focused on price for the consumer, was focused in partnership with health plans. So originally eighteen Blue Cross Blue Shield plans came together uh to help form Civic script. We've since added a couple of other large health plans as well as a couple of public benefit PBMs uh to the organization. Next slide please. So we have a number of drugs in development for Civic script. We recently launched our first one, which is a cancer drug, which is available at a fraction of current prices. Um but we are bringing insulin to market. I won't spend time on this slide. I think other presenters have already uh addressed the fact that insulin is a essential drug, a life-saving drug to eight million Americans. Uh and the cost of it has grown and grown, and particularly the gap uh between list prices, which are especially harmful to uninsured patients and underinsured patients. And the net prices, which is sort of the post-rebate negotiated price, has continued to grow year on year. Next slide. Uh and we can go to the next slide. And actually to the next one. Okay, so Civic is developing the three insulins that account for most daily uh use in the US. Insulin, Glargine, Lispro and Aspart, that's equivalent uh to Lantus, Humalog and Novolog. Uh we will develop uh biosimilar and interchangeable versions of those products. We'll manufacture them here at our US facility uh and deliver them to the market. And each will be available both in vials and in pre-filled pens. The first of those products uh will reach the market in late twenty twenty-four. If you could actually go back up a slide. Uh and so the the development costs for insulin uh are being borne uh by a group of philanthropic donors um that include some of the major diabetes organizations, some health plans, health systems, some philanthropies and and high net worth individuals. To bring those products to market, we estimate a cost of roughly a hundred and twenty-five million dollars. That's to cover the clinical trials, uh the pen delivery device, uh the drug substance uh partner uh and the capital investments uh required to make the product. So go forward a slide. And one more. And now we come to price transparency. So in the same way that Civic has a single transparent price for the drugs that we're supplying to health systems today. We will have a single transparent price for insulin. And although we're still some away from launching the products, we have actually announced what those prices will be. And that will be not more than thirty dollars uh for a vial of insulin. And that's the price to the consumer at the pharmacy counter. So we recognize that once the product leaves our hands, there are other entities in the supply chain that need to stay in business and need to make a reasonable margin, and that builds that in. Uh and similarly, not more than fifty-five dollars uh for a box of five pen cartridges. So if you compare those prices to today's list prices, the price that you pay if you're uninsured or if you have if you're underinsured and at some point in the year have to pay out of pocket based on list prices, uh that's a massive uh savings. And again, that's one price. It's available to uh any pharmacy that wants to order it, providing uh they abide by what we call our maximum retail price policy, which is not to mark it up more than that recommended price that's that's on this slide. Uh so there are no rebates uh and no discounts on the product other than rebates that are required by law, such as for Medicaid and uh before DB programs. Next slide. Uh so I think I've covered this really. So Civic sells the price at a at one trend, sells the product at a single transparent price. The pharmacy purchases it and charges the uh patient no more than the uh publicly available maximum recommended price. Patients pay no more than that price. Uh and I should say that although Civic script is formed in partnership with health plans, the intent is that all of the savings are passed on to consumers either at the point of sale through reduced out-of-pocket costs or in premiums. And our health plan members will be reporting on those savings each year. Um but the product will be available to any health plan and to any pharmacy, as I say, that wants to order it and abide by our pricing policy. Next slide. Uh just to say briefly, I think other presenters have touched on a lot of the relevant state and federal policy on insulin. Uh what we're doing is complimentary to those efforts. Uh many of the uh co-pay caps, all of the co-pay caps don't affect, don't help folks who don't have insurance. Uh and so a low-cost affordable insulin uh remains important in the market. And even for people who have the the benefit of insurance and benefit from some of those co-co pay caps, uh there's still potential to further reduce their costs. Um there's also potential for states and other entities uh to join us in helping to transform the insulin market. And we can talk more about that in the Q and A if it comes up. Uh next slide. And uh those are some of the funders of our insulin initiative. Uh and uh want to acknowledge them and and thank them for their support. And next slide. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. That's fascinating. And uh look forward to some questions now. So if our presenters, you're welcome to turn your cameras all back on. And we'll open it up to see if our moderators have any questions. See Senator Patterson.
Well, thank you so much um for to all of the presenters. Um I I have a question um for Alan, and that is did I hear earlier that you're partnering with California as they're considering uh manufacturing drugs there? Or or I thought I heard it in relation to one state uh after the presentation by Chris. Or in that presentation, thanks.
Uh you did not hear that from me. Uh California had the legislature funded the governor's request. And so the state has a funding to partner with somebody on insulin production. Uh they've issued a RFI and we've acknowledged publicly that we responded to the RFI as did other entities. Uh and what I would say is we would be glad to partner with any public or private entity that shares our goal of quality affordable insulin available to anyone who needs it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for that. See if there are any other questions. While our moderators are are thinking and a question for Chris, you you talked a lot about initiatives that some individual states are taking. Uh are you aware of, or do you see any opportunities for states to partner in any initiatives in this area?
Sorry, just to clarify, uh states partnering with each other or? Okay.
Yes.
Um it is not something that I've heard of, but I do, but I think in a prescription drug space, you're seeing a lot of states do that. Um a lot of states are interested in learning from each other and trying to leverage whatever resources that they have. If that is something that states are interested in, I think that uh I would like to plug Nashpea. I think we we can provide a critical wolf that to to pick to put people in touch with each other who are interested. But I do think that does make a little bit of sense, especially uh, you know. Uh Ray RX is one opportunity where states have really sort of have worked together to try to realize some uh try to create some efficiencies in this market, I guess.
Great, thank you, Chris. Senator Patterson, see your hand.
Uh thank you, George Stolphy. Could I ask a follow-up question to the one that you had just asked of Chris, and that is related to um Medicare, Medicaid, ERISA plans and the uninsured? And what strategies have you seen in other states to help address that um moving forward?
Yeah, so I so a little bit with these um the emergency access programs I was referencing and and the uh supply net, the uh the uh safety net programs, excuse me. Uh states have, it depends on how you structure it, but these are the programs that states are are implementing. Uh these are the policies states are implementing so that, you know, we have these caps. That's great for if you have insurance, but if you're underinsured, if you're uninsured, you're not really uh enjoying the full benefit of that. So those types of programs are things that states are pursuing to make sure that this relief is felt with those who are uninsured or underinsured.
Thank you for that. And thank you, Senator, for that question. Looking for any other hands. All right, maybe one last quick question uh to Wissam. You 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 talked about a little bit around switching uh insulin products uh when there are lower-cost alternatives. Uh and and uh one of your bullet points hinted at uh the the work that's involved in that. Can you just talk a little bit more about apprehensions or or feedback you get from uh your plan members of around switching insulin products and and what you do to overcome those?
Yeah, thanks for that question, Andrew. Um yeah, we have a, you know, we notify our members um at least thirty days in advance of an upcoming change. And letting them know the reasons for that. And if they have issues, you know, they can still, you know, there's some reason they can't be on the biosimilar product. You know, there's a process, a pathway to submit those requests to us, and we evaluate those individually. And you know, per our, you know, conversion rates, you know, ninety-five percent, there's still that five percent that needed to stay on. You know, the innovator product for whatever reason. Um so there is a pathway to that, and in our customer service teams are on the phone. You have all those resources handy to them. And I know, working with the manufacturer, we actually had a shortage, you know, early on, you know, for the biosimilar. And we actually allowed both products to process for a bit of time uh to so that they could catch up, you know, in terms of getting those medications to the pharmacies, because it was a new product in the fall. And we made a decision to make a a change to, you know, benefit our members and 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 our payers.
Great. Thank you for that information. All right. Well, I'm sure we could keep going around this for a while. We're a a little behind. So I'd like to thank our four panelists very much for joining us today and sharing this information. Uh remind folks that all their contact information, uh I believe was provided uh and available. So if you have follow-up questions, uh please reach out to them. Uh so with that, let's move on to our final panel, where we're going to discuss pharmaceutical supply chain and PBM rebate transparency. So as you know, there are many entities and financial parts in the financial supply chain, some of which contribute to increasing the cost of prescription drugs. Uh rebates and other discounts are used to reduce cost of prescription drugs to supply chain entities. But those often do not bring down the price consumers pay. So understanding how rebates work and the cost of the various parts of the supply chain are important to evaluating the cost of prescription drugs. So we're gonna have our presenters uh each share some information. Please try to keep that to around five minutes. Uh and once they're done, we'll have more time for questions. So uh first off, we're gonna turn it over to Tanya.
Thank you. Can we get my first slide up? There we go. All right, so today I'm gonna talk about the role of a PBM in the supply chain in healthcare. So next slide. So my name is Tanya Neal. I am the Senior Director for State Affairs for the State of Oregon for the Pharmaceutical Care Management Association. I'm also a fifteen-year uh trustee on a ERISA healthcare plan and that oversees twenty-five hundred lives um on a uh daily basis in the health healthcare and the prescription drug plans. Next slide. So I want to introduce you guys to Matt. Matt lives with high cholesterol. He leads an active lifestyle. He runs. He bikes, he kayaks, he lives a northwest life that we all enjoy. But he also has a genetic predis- predisposition to high cholesterol that can't be controlled by diet and exercise alone. So he depends on three medications to keep him healthy and to keep everything in check. Without his medications, his life is at risk for strokes and heart attacks. He depends on these medications daily to stay healthy. Matt is planning to retire soon, and he will be on a fixed income, so having access to affordable medication is really important. A pharmacy benefit manager helps negotiate with big drug companies to keep drug prices in check for people like Matt. A PBM also keeps track of drugs and harmful interactions that may have have and provides access to medication. Like the three drugs that Matt relies on, he has the ability to utilize mail order Like the three drugs that Matt relies on, he has the ability to utilize mail order or pick those up at his local pharmacy. Because of his PBM, Matt knows exactly what his costs are going to be. Just like in his situation, in all kinds of other situations, we all need advocates, and PBMs are hired by your health plan to advocate, to be a resource, and to help keep drug prices affordable. Next slide. Thank you. So, a PBM does a number of things. They utilize bulk pricing to negotiate and with drug manufacturers to get the best possible price for the drug, the drug plan that they're representing. They also provide a number of services, including claims adjudication and education for the members or their patients. Next slide. Who we don't work for are pharmacies and drug manufacturers. This is a misperception that we're, we're benefiting in the same way a manufacturer of drug, prescription drugs benefits. Next slide. Who we do represent are three-point-seven million Oregonians and two-hundred-and-sixty-six million Americans. All who have health insurance, or healthcare through a health plan. Next slide. What do those people look like? Those are employees for the State of Oregon, labor unions, teacher, teachers' unions, utility companies, firefighters, and mom and pops in every Oregon community. Basically, if there is a healthcare plan, a PBM is involved. And we encourage you to contact your healthcare plan and ask who your PBM is. Next slide. What do we do for those, all those people? We help to improve drug safety. PBMs negotiate for patient affordability. We help drive innovation and competition. We create apps so patients can track their medications and make sure they're getting the right medications, as well as providing databases for pharmacies in order to make sure they have access to similar information that helps their patients. Next slide. How do we do that? PBMs utilize tools to provide employers' choice that help them provide affordable, quality prescription drugs for their employees, who are also the patients. We utilize a number of tools. Next slide. What do those tools look like? Mail delivery is one that we have all gotten to know during COVID. Mail delivery, it makes it easy for patients to get their medication through programs that are able to deliver to home. We're able to keep the conversation on the patients by talking and focusing on the premiums, by keeping the premiums low and educating on drug options and pharmacy network options. We get to know the patients by tracking through databases, by having customer service reps available, and by working with the healthcare plan. We're able to know the patient, but also make sure that the plan and the patient are both kept at the forefront of what's important. PBMs provide a number of pharmacy expertise through employing specialists in pharmacy business as well as insurance. We have a number of pharmacists that are on staff with many of our companies. Next slide. We utilize bulk purchasing. Just like when you go to Costco, your PBMs are able to take all the lives that they represent with a plan and be able to negotiate with manufacturers to get the best price available for that particular plan, which benefits the patient at the end of the day. Rebates is another tool that helps keeps premiums low, as not all drugs have alternatives available. Couple of things to note about rebates, because we've talked about them a little bit here today. Rebates are only on brand-name drugs. PBMs encourage the use of generic drugs. Rebates, about ninety percent of them, according to our federal government's research, about ninety percent of rebates go back to the plan. Prescription drug formularies are a list. It's a customized list of prescription drugs that the healthcare, the health plan is provided and determines what the prescription drugs are on that list. It's a list that's updated on every seven days and is regulated by both the State of Oregon as well as the federal government for Medicaid programs. And then we have a tool called Pharmacy and Therapeutics Committees. These are folks who help select the right drug for the right diagnosis at the right time, which is key in driving quality healthcare as well as affordable prices. Next slide. One of the things we forget to look at is what would the world look like without a PBM? With many of your health plans retaining by choice voluntarily hiring a PBM, we know that if we did not have PBMs in the market, that our costs would increase between forty and fifty percent. We know that there would be less utilization of generic drugs, which also causes the cost of drugs to increase. We know that drug manufacturers would have no competition or wouldn't be pushed towards competing to keep drug prices low. Quality controls would be limited. We would not have auditions for fraud and waste and abuses. And we wouldn't have those folks who process paper claims. Claim processing times would be much longer without a PBM involved. Next slide. PBMs are here to assist and help keep prices low. That's one of the primary functions of a PBM. There's all kinds of misinformation in the market. And what we like to do is make sure you guys know that we are a resource. PCMA is here to answer questions and to provide factual information about the role of a PBM in the healthcare market. Thank you. And if there's any questions, I'm happy to take them when it's appropriate.
Thank you so much, Tanya. Like with the first panel, if you could hold on, we'll go through the panelists and then have some time for questions. So next, we're going to turn it over to Daria.
Hi. Good afternoon. Confirming you can hear me.
Yes, very well.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Apologies again to everyone for the last-minute switch in presenters. I am Daria McGrew, Director of State Policy for Pharma. We are a trade association representing thirty-three member companies who make brand and innovative treatments and cures. Kudos to the work put into the report, again, by the department this year. But just want to state upfront that I haven't had a chance to read and review this year's report yet. So I won't be commenting on specific data in this year's report, but know that a lot of work went into that, and I look forward to digging in. Next slide, please. I know we are here to talk at this committee about prescription drug medicine and the prices of prescription drugs. But I would be remiss if I didn't start by acknowledging the larger context of the healthcare system. And while healthcare spending has grown a lot in our country in the last decades, it, it's important to know that spending on medicines is a small and stable share of total healthcare spending and remains, is projected by federal actuaries to remain such into the future. Now, we are here to talk a little about rebates today. And the rebate system is not unique to, to this industry. It does exist in a lot of industries where folks experience, whoops, folks are exposed to rebate daily. We go back to, I think I'm on slide three. Yeah, here we go. Good. Thank you. Where you might have a difference between sticker price and, or suggested retail price and the difference that payers pay. Could you go to the next slide, please? Thank you. So when we're talking about list prices, or, you know, the prices of prescription drug as in the report, or a lot of different reports and discussions here today, it is important, of course, to remember that rebates do exist in this industry and many industries and have grown massively in the last few years. So the difference between the list price and the price for, in, in total in the US in twenty-twenty-one has exceeded this, has exceeded two-hundred billion dollars. So that is almost triple what it was just ten years ago. So it's important to remember that when we have a conversation about concurrent increases in negotiated rebates. Next slide, please. And the average rebate of a brand medicine's net price is about forty-nine percent. So, you know, half of the list price is what plans and PBMs are actually paying for the medicine. So when you look at net price, the growth in prescription prices has slowed significantly. Growth has been slow and stable for over five years now, below inflation. According to the Bureau of Labor Statistics, in, for several quarters now, where they do reporting, prescription, prescription medicine inflation is one of the lowest industries at about one percent. Next slide, please. So I, I want to highlight many, many of the stories. Oh, let's see. Can we go to the next slide, please? Oh, no. Sorry. Many of the stories, yeah, here we go. Thank you. Many of the stories that you have heard from patients are largely about plan design. Those, those shock in, in prices that change or unaware of price changing when they go to the pharmacy counter often are more about plan design than, than drug pricing. And in fact, shifting in the market space and plan design has put more and more patients into high deductible plans or coinsurance plans than ever before. And up to forty, you know, forty-nine, about half of patients are in a plan where they will be asked to pay, even though they have insurance, they may be asked to pay the list price or an undiscounted rate, even though the plan and the PBM are receiving a rebate, but they are not passing it on to the patient. Next slide, please. Now, I do appreciate for several years now, this committee or this report has highlighted the need for increased transparency. There has been in the, in the past few years, several years, increasing vertical consolidation in the insurance and PBM marketplace. So this, this kind of consolidation does make it difficult for regulators and policymakers to understand where the dollars flow and the cost drivers in the system. Currently, just three PBMs oversee eighty percent of prescription claims in the US. Additionally, when a large chunk of the supply chain is consolidated with a single bottom line, it has led folks to question whether there are appropriate balances, supply and demand and purchaser and, and seller in the market to ensure that this market is working in the best interest of patients. Next slide, please. We would propose that while investigators are looking into and for more transparency in all supply chain entities, that there are short-term, near-term solutions that policymakers could look at. Then here are just a couple of them that, that have been discussed, such as insulin co-pay caps, like were discussed on the previous panel. Next slide, please. One thing that we believe is a, is a fairly simple and transparent way of ensuring that some of those, you know, dollars of the two-hundred billion dollars in rebates are flowing directly back to patients in their pocketbook for direct relief is ensuring that those rebates make it back to the patient. We believe there, there is modeling out there from multiple sources saying that if this were consistently done in more plans, it would, could save patients with chronic conditions or specialty diseases, a thousand dollars directly at the pharmacy counter and would only increase member premiums by less than, less than one percent. We're talking pennies and small dollars per, per member, per month. Next slide, please. And another solution would be disrupting some of the misaligned incentives in the system. We do know that there is an incentive for PBMs to choose higher list-price medicines over generic and biosimilar medicines. For a couple of reasons, they are able to get higher rebates for those. And they are able to charge a percentage, an administration fee based on the percentage of that list price. And so we believe that that is a, a potentially a solution that policymakers can look at in the near term to simply say that administrative fees need to be based on the service and not based on a percentage of the list price. And with that, I conclude my remarks. Thank you.
Thanks, Daria. Appreciate you being here and filling in so well. And please stick around. We have two more presenters, and then we'll have questions. And so next, we're going to turn it over to Leah.
Thank you, Professor Stolphy. And thanks for having us here today. My name is Leah Lindahl with the Healthcare Distribution Alliance. We're the trade association for primary pharmaceutical wholesale distributors. Before moving into the presentation, I just want to preface, wholesalers are not engaged in kind of the pay side of the supply chain. So we really can't address anything on the PBM transparency side. So since that's the title of the presentation or the panel group, just wanted to put that out there first. So when you look at a wholesaler, pretty simply, we're the logistics experts as well as kind of the delivery provider. Once the pharmacy or the hospital receives that delivery, we don't have any insight into kind of the patient-level information. So what insurance they're on, what, what copays they have, rebates, et cetera, that's really falling outside of our scope. We don't have insight into that piece. But I will give you an overview on what a wholesaler does and our role in the supply chains. Go to the next slide. This is just a picture of a very messy, messy slide where you can see on the one side you have the manufacturers, there's about fifteen hundred of those. And then on the other side, you have all of the healthcare providers. So whether that be the pharmacies, the hospitals, the nursing homes, and if any point of care that you're going to receive a product from, there's about a hundred and eighty thousand of those. So as you can see, if you had all the manufacturers responsible for communicating with all of the healthcare providers and vice versa, on what orders they need to provide to what patients, it's very messy. So we'll go to the next slide and clean it up for you. One more, I think. Yep, so very clean. So we provide kind of the link in between both of those to kind of keep the mess out of the supply chain. So we work directly with the manufacturers and will purchase their products. We store them in regionally-located warehouses, kind of located across the country in very specific areas. And then we take orders from those regions and ensure that hospitals and pharmacies and anybody that's ordering from one of those points of care has efficient and safe access to their medicines. The general rule of thumb is when a pharmacy orders from a wholesaler, that you would receive that product within roughly eight hours. So if you place your order as a pharmacy at eight PM the night before, you should get it at eight AM the next day so that you have access to those products. They're not stored on the pharmacy shelves, kind of taking up space or, or cost really, that they can get those products in the safest, efficient way possible. And that's kind of the role that wholesalers play. We'll go to the next slide. So that's our, our link. We provide just kind of the link between the two. So our responsibilities are really to provide a one-stop shop for the dispensing locations to get access to the manufacturer's medications. We don't manufacture them, we don't prescribe them, we don't promote them, and we don't get engaged in kind of the out-of-pocket costs or the benefit designs that each patient is, is under. And then the next slide. This is just a breakdown of kind of where we provide products to. So you can see about six percent of manufacturers' products go directly from the manufacturer to the providers. I think we saw that with Pfizer, given some of the cold chain requirements of their vaccine. It was easier for them to kind of set up that arm to directly ship those products during the COVID pandemic rather than going through kind of the distribution channel. So there are some cases of that instance, but by and large, most of the products that you see coming to the hospital or pharmacies are coming from a wholesale distributor. And that's the whole kind of host of groups down there. So from independent pharmacies, community pharmacies, hospitals, nursing homes, supply, or sorry, chain pharmacies, warehouses, et cetera. And next slide. And it goes beyond just shipping product. We're a very technically savvy industry. They help take off some of that work from the pharmacies and the manufacturer side to know kind of predictability in the supply chain, hopefully helping eliminate any product shortages or kind of seeing those in advance of them coming to fruition. We divide, we provide a lot of safety around the delivery of the product. As you can obviously tell, these are very expensive products a lot of times, or expensive products a lot of times, or there's stability issues, whether they need refrigeration, et cetera. So we take a lot of that on to make sure that those products are delivered in the very safest and most efficient way possible. And that's during calm times and then obviously during kind of crazy times of the pandemic or natural disasters, making sure that hospitals have the products they need when the patients need them, despite what's going on in the world. Due to these savings for the healthcare system, they generally run between about thirty-three and fifty-three billion dollars a year. And that's because, again, from that busy side at the beginning of the presentation, you're not having all of these entities trying to do all of this work on their own. So next slide. This is a breakdown of kind of our role in pricing. So when you look at a brand product, branded generic are a little bit different. So when you look at a brand product and generic, generally wholesalers are a fee-for-service business model. So what that means is we purchase product from the manufacturers at the wholesale acquisition cost, which is a figure that's set by the manufacturers. It's publicly available. And then we'll in turn charge the manufacturer a service fee for the services provided. So if the product, and this kind of speaks to Senator Patterson's question, so if a brand product needed refrigeration or there were certain circumstances around that, then those fees are then kind of a little bit adjusted or different. All of those fees in the, in the service fee system are based on federal law. So it's essentially anything that the manufacturer would have to do themselves that there's a service fee for. So that kind of takes that and makes it a little bit cleaner. Hopefully that helps answer the question there. Those fees are not passed down to the subsequent purchasers. So our companies are just between what they do for the manufacturer. They charge the manufacturer that service fee and then the provides the pharmacy their orders as they come in. So the fee-for-service model is between the manufacturer and the wholesaler themselves. They typically sell branded products based on WAC. Generic pricing, the WAC changes and fluctuates on daily, if not hourly at some points. So it's a bit more inconsistent, kind of like a commodity marketplace in the generic side. But they can use the market power since it is a very competitive industry to kind of help drive down or kind of keep the generic costs low and level. We're also very high volume and low margin industry. Our margins have remained pretty consistent at least over a decade, if not longer, at about one percent profit margins. So we are pretty consistent around that mark and one of the lowest, if not the lowest net profit margin industry in the supply chain itself. The blue kind of section just kind of goes through a little bit. We're not really involved in the pay side again. So what I said at the beginning, we don't kind of have any insight into the patient level data. So we don't really see who the patients are. Once we drop the drugs off or the medicines at the pharmacy, we kind of fall outside of the scope of how the pharmacy or the insurance companies and PBMs, et cetera, can reimburse or pay for that product. Next slide. And this is just an overview of the supply chain. This is from the Wall Street Journal. It's a, it's a couple of years old, but it's about, it's from a three hundred branded products. You can kind of see the flow of, of the product through the chain. And again, three hundred branded product, the wholesaler retains about three dollars in the profit margin there. There's a lot of these out there. There's some from Penberg Consulting. This is a compilation between the two. Pharma has a really nice report called Follow the Dollar. The University of Southern California, again, all of those reports have the similar representation of where the wholesaler sits in the, in the supply chain. And I think that's our presentation. So hopefully I caught us back up on time and I'll, I'll pass it back to you, Prashant.
Thank you so much, Leah. And now we'll move on to our last presentation and then we'll have some questions. Kevin, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to, to speak today. I'm Kevin Russell. I run an independent pharmacy in Redmond, Oregon. I'm also representing independent pharmacies in Oregon through Oregon State Pharmacy Association. Let's go to the next slide. So let's talk a little bit about how pharmacies buy drugs. Pharmacies buy drugs from the major wholesalers, as we just learned, through a buying group. And independent pharmacies actually have a fair amount of leverage in contracts because we go through large buying groups. The buying group that our pharmacy uses is the largest in the country and is bigger than many chains. So the prices we get are the best we can get. And interestingly enough, is that it doesn't seem to matter too much which major wholesaler you contract with or which large buying group you're a part of, that the actual price that you buy the prescriptions for is very, very similar between all of those deals within a fraction of one percent. Also, all of those contracts that you, with the manufacturers require that you buy most of your generics from that manufacturer because that's where they make a lot of their money. So there's also secondary wholesalers on the market that provide discounted generics that can oftentimes buy less than you can through a major wholesalers. But because you're required to buy most of your generic from the major wholesalers, pharmacies are really limited to the amount of drugs they can buy from this discounted marketplace. Next slide please. So I want to take you through the journey of a prescription for a brand name drug. And the journey starts with the patient bringing in a prescription. The pharmacy fills that prescription. The cost of that drug in this case is four hundred dollars to the pharmacy. And we bill that prescription to the PBM. It actually doesn't matter what price we charge the PBM because they return back what our contracted rate is with them. And in this example, it's one percent over acquisition cost or four hundred and four dollars, which is pretty typical. So they also tell us what amount to charge the patient. In this case, the patient has a twenty percent co-insurance benefit. So we're going to charge the patient eighty dollars and eighty cents for their medication. But notice on the right side of the slide here that the PBM is receiving a, a discount rebate from the manufacturer. In this case, I just picked fifty percent. So the PBM is actually paying around a hundred and twenty dollars for this four hundred dollar prescription. The patient is paying eighty. And the takeaway from here is the patient is actually paying about forty percent of their drug bill instead of their twenty percent benefit. The other takeaway from this is that, you know, the pharmacy business and labor costs are between ten and fifteen dollars per prescription. So in this example, the pharmacy is actually losing money. Next slide. So we'll take this through the journey of a generic drug now. So a patient brings in a, a prescription to the pharmacy, which they fill. The, the price to the pharmacy of that drug is ten dollars. In this case, we're actually going to inflate that price and bill eighty dollars to the PBM. And we'll get to the reason why for that in a minute. The PBM, instead of returning back a contracted rate, returns back what's called a maximal allowable cost or MAC rate. And that is a, that is a figure that they get to determine on their own. It's not part of our contract. We have no way of knowing what that's going to be. Often it's below cost. And in this case, it is, they return a price of eight dollars that they're going to pay, that they're, they're going to pay us. And in this case, that gets passed on to the patient as their cost for the medication. Sometimes that, that discount does not get passed on to the patient, but we'll give them the benefit of the doubt and say, in this case, it does. So the takeaways from the generics here is that the patient's getting a great deal. They're actually buying below cost on the drug. The PBM is going to make money from the pharmacy via fee and the payer that they're going to charge something for. And if the PBM MAC rate they're paying the pharmacy is based on prices, the pharmacy cannot access that drug for, as per the previous example. And, you know, the other thing is that the pharmacy is losing a significant amount of money here. And the question starts to become, should they refuse to fill and deny patient access to their medication? Pharmacists are healthcare providers and traditionally we have never refused care to patients because we take care of people. That's what we do. But that just can't continue in this current model. Next slide please. So how do pharmacies stay in business? So I, I encourage all of you to read this new report that was just published. It's available at oregonpharmacy.org. And it studied seven, seventy independent pharmacies in one chain in Oregon and the prices that they have been paid for prescription drugs for the last three years. Don't have time to go to the details of that, but suffice it to say that the majority of claims are paid below the cost of the pharmacies doing business. And the reason how they stay in business is, is that one to two percent of pharmacy claims, mostly in the generic area, are very profitable for the pharmacy and subsidize other losses. So what we've really got going on here is a, a really broken system where in order for the pharmacy to stay in this business, they have to charge high usual and customary prices, like the eighty dollar example for the ten dollar drug. And because one to two percent of the time, we're actually going to get that price from a third party or a patient. It also creates access problems for patients if a pharmacy says, I'm sorry, we're not going to be able to fill your medicine because we're not getting paid enough for it. This system is really unequal and unstable and it's really causing problems of access to care in Oregon. Next slide please. So what are the solutions to this? So there's a very simple solution, which is to require that pharmacies be paid by third parties on a drug cost plus a dispensing fee basis, which covers their cost of dispensing the medication. This actually creates equity across all prescriptions and it removes incentives for pharmacies to charge high prices or refuse to fill prescriptions. This will stabilize community pharmacies. It will improve service and access to patients and will allow pharmacies to reestablish themselves in the pharmacy deserts of Oregon. Second, required drug rebates be shared with patients at the point of sale. As pre, our previous presenters mentioned that this can provide a significant impact for patients with a minimal impact for health plans. And lastly, we should examine the wholesaler market and how it prevents pharmacies from buying drugs at the lowest possible cost. I'd be remiss if I didn't say that, you know, pharmacists are healthcare providers and we're here to provide care for patients. And we don't want to have to deal with all of these complex, you know, pricing problems that are going on in the marketplace. We want to take care of patients. So we need to create a model that supports that. And I'll close with an example that happened last night. There was a patient who called us late in the day from Madras, Oregon, which is a little ways away from Redmond. Their local independent pharmacy had to close because of low reimbursement rates, even though they were a thriving business that was growing rapidly. They just weren't getting paid enough to stay in business. The remaining pharmacies in town are overwhelmed. And because of the same problem, they can't afford to add staff to take care of people either. So she had a life and death medicine to keep her husband out of the hospital. And she had to have it last night. She couldn't get other pharmacies in, in Redmond to answer their phones because they were so busy. And she got ahold of us. And we said, yes, we have that medicine in stock. And yes, we take your insurance. And she drove all the way here and we stayed, we, our pharmacy stayed open for her so that we could take care of that, her, from that patient. And during that time, she asked all kinds of questions about their health and what was going on in their lives with their prescriptions and their health because they couldn't get that care anymore from their local pharmacy. And when we, we let her go at thirty minutes after closing and got her taken care of because that's what we do. And after all of that, I went back and looked at what we got paid. And we got paid twenty-three dollars below our acquisition cost for that drug. We lost money for taking care of that patient. The value that independent pharmacies provide their communities does not equal the payments we're receiving. Thank you.
Kevin, thank you. And thank you for sharing that story as well. So I invited all of our four panelists to rejoin and turn your cameras on. And we'll open it up to our moderators to see if you have any questions. Senator Patterson.
Well, thank you so much to all of our presenters. Grateful that you're here. And Mr. Russell, thank you for your service and for those recommendations on legislative changes that could be made so that independent pharmacists who are critical to our state can remain in business and not only just remain in business, but obviously have successful businesses. So thank you. That raises the question of, of successful businesses. Yeah, I think one of our earlier presenters had mentioned that Civica is a nonprofit drug manufacturing company. And perhaps Ms. McGrew, if you would mention, if you could speak to how many, what percentage of the drug manufacturers in the country who are members of your association are nonprofit? And how many are, are for-profit? I would assume that many of the for-profit corporations, while doing amazing work with creating lifesaving medications, do have a responsibility to stockholders to maximize returns.
Our member companies are for-profit companies. You are correct.
Do you have nonprofit members in, that are part of Pharma?
I don't, not our major companies. We may have some associate, associate members, but not our major company.
Thank you. And I don't see, I see Representative Noble is back and I don't know if Representative Gosa is still here. Going to turn it over to them.
Well, thanks, Senator. I, I've got a, a question. Start with Daria, but others as well. You know, you, you talked a lot about rebates and how over the last, I believe it's ten years, rebates have more than doubled. Curious if you have any thoughts about why that's happened over the past ten years?
I think generally, thank you for the question. I think generally there's sort of an arms race. You know, that you have PBMs that started with the function of negotiating bulk purchasing and that power has grown and significantly, they've taken on more and more of the, more administration and even additional functions as the speaker from PCMA discussed. And I, and I believe that that consolidation of power has led to, as I said, kind of an arms race of higher and higher rebate negotiation.
So I'm happy to also comment on this. So a hundred percent of our health plans choose to hire a PBM. And they also choose whether or not a rebate is included in their plan. So the additional utilization of rebates is the decision of the health plan owner. And so as people become more familiar and they get rebates back, which help keep premiums low, typically would see a higher utilization in that, with that particular tool. We, again, I commented to this earlier, we know that the federal government evaluated rebate sharing between PBMs and payers. And they found that even those PBMs engaged in sharing contracts still passed over more than ninety percent of rebates to those plans. So I think it's less about the PBM and more about how the plan gets to utilize and keep their premiums low and offer better benefits to their participants.
Thank you, Tanya, Daria. Senator, do you have a question? Yeah, please.
Could I make a comment to Ms. Lindahl? I'm just grateful. On behalf of everyone in America, thank you for the phenomenal job you did in rolling out the, and distribute, the distribution of the vaccines. My question is related to distribution of things that is in short supply right now in Oregon, which is Tamiflu. It may also be in short supply across the country. I was wondering if you could speak to some of those proactively addressing shortages like that in the future.
Sure. No, that's something that our companies work tirelessly on. I know that in certain instances, when we see like flu uptake or uptick in certain areas, that they can look at the supply chain as a whole. So if like Southern Oregon or Washington wasn't seeing as big of a number and spike of flu cases and they can kind of readjust some of the products down to different areas. But they essentially try to do the best they can. I think it's difficult when you see kind of a swath of cases come up like we're seeing right now with flu, RSV and, and some of the other ones. So they just kind of try to predict and help fill the gaps wherever, wherever possible and get the product where it's needed. But thank you.
Thank you, Leah. Okay, well, I, again, I'm sure we could go on for quite a while, but we are a bit over our time. So I want to thank all of our panelists for joining us very much. And again, contact information was provided for most. So if anyone has any And again, contact information was provided for most. So if anyone has any more questions, I'm sure you could follow up and get those answered. So thank you again. So with that, we'll, we'll move on to our, our second public comment period. We do have one person at least that has signed up. So at this point, I would turn things over to Lillian for testimony.
Hello. Can folks hear me?
Yes, you can. Go right ahead.
Okay, great. Hello. So my name is Lillian Carebake and I am a patient in Portland, Oregon. Thank you so much for this incredibly informative panel. I want to share my story to provide support for regulations at both the federal level, which would be the Help Copays Act and at the state level, which is SB five sixty prohibiting insurance from implementing copay accumulator adjuster programs that do not count manufacturer copay assistance towards patient deductibles and out of pocket maximums. To date, fifteen states have enacted laws banning payer and PBM use of copay accumulator programs. Oregon is not one of them, and this significantly affected me this year to the tune of a three thousand dollar copay. I would also like to support regulations that give prospective insurance consumers more clear information on if these cap programs exist prior to enrolling in a plan. I've been on Enbrel, a biological for rheumatoid arthritis since 2015. The medication currently has a list price of ten thousand nine hundred and eighty-nine dollars per month, a more than eight hundred percent increase from when I first got on it with no change in formulation. This drug is an absolute miracle for me as I could not even hold a pen for six years due to my arthritis before getting on it. Now I am a competitive figure skater. Within weeks of starting treatment, I was ninety-nine percent symptom free. This is a first line treatment for rheumatoid arthritis with no affordable alternative available in the U.S. I use manufacturer copay assistance to afford Enbrel. The list price is more than my monthly income and I could not afford these drugs without copay assistance due to my high deductible plan. The only insurance available to me through my employer is an HDHP plan. For patients with high medical needs like me, these HDHPs are also helpful because it gives us access to a tax advantage health savings account as well, which many of us need to afford medical costs. In 2022, my plan implemented a copay accumulator adjuster program mid-plan year. And my deductible went from being a hundred percent met by my manufacturer assistance to zero percent met. I worked hard prior to accepting this plan to figure out if one of these cap programs was in place when I was shopping for a plan. However, I cannot get any information from the insurance plans available to me, spending over eight hours on the phone trying to get this information. There is no requirement that this is clearly disclosed to patients when shopping for a plan and no plan on, place on the marketplace to shed information on this. Many patients like me were completely surprised in early 2022 to discover that we had used up a hundred percent of our copay assistance allowance minus twelve thousand dollars per year because none of it was getting applied to our deductible or out of pocket maximum. So I was paying the full amount of my drug each month with copay assistance and there were no guardrails in place for patient cost sharing. It was exhausted in a month. Until July twenty twenty-one HSS ruling, insurance companies and PBMs were not allowed to do copay accumulator adjuster programs for drugs with no cheaper alternative like mine. Protecting the patients like me. This is not about buying a brand name of Tylenol when a generic is available, like a compound drug. Most of these specialty drugs have no cheaper therapeutic equivalent. I already faced numerous barriers in accessing this drug. I was required to fail first on three cheaper drugs before being approved for this drug due to a process called step therapy. Every year I must race to get prior authorization in a process that can sometimes take longer than the twenty-eight day quantity limit I have on my drug. This cap program adds an additional barrier. My insurance exhausted my twelve thousand dollar annual limit from my manufacturer. And then they also charged me the full amount, essentially double dipping. I went from seven years of paying zero dollars per month for my drug to unexpectedly owing three thousand dollars for a single month's refill. Copay accumulators are a new form of surprise billing for patients. The insurance companies are not required to disclose these policies or infect when shopping for the plan. And they, when they do disclose them in plan documents for already enrolled members, there is no standard language and the language is confusing. In most states where they are not banned, eighty to a hundred percent of the plans on the marketplace have them in place. The AIDS Institute report has details on this. Over ninety percent of plans in Oregon have them in place. It sucks as a patient who's been on these drugs for years because many of us choose our insurance plans based on manufacturer assistance, which we have sometimes used for decades. So we choose high deductible plans because we meet them using copay assistance in January or February due to the high cost of our drug. And the rest of our in-network medical costs are no out of pocket to us. An AIDS Institute study showed that patients are far more likely to abandon their treatment when out of pocket costs exceed a hundred dollars. The HELP Act and SB five sixty would require health plans to count the value of copay assistance towards patient cost sharing requirements. I wouldn't get shocked by a three thousand dollar copay. This would require private plans to count all cost sharing for covered services to accrue to a patient's deductible and out of pocket maximum. It would also close a loophole that allows many employer health plans like mine to deem certain covered drugs as non-essential, which means that the insurer would not count any cost sharing towards the patient deductible and out of pocket maximum. Thank you.
Lillian, thank you very much for your powerful testimony, for sharing your story and for the specific ideas you have for change. Someone said in the chat, I agree. Unfortunately, your story is not unique. And there are others in a similar situation. So I look forward to seeing what we can do to address that and, and hopefully even follow up with you after this hearing.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So with that, we reached the end of this year's hearing. I want to thank everyone, our panelists, our members of the public, those who provided testimony for joining us. A huge thank you to our staff as well. There is an enormous amount that goes on to prepare for and put on this hearing and to put together our annual report. I want to thank our moderators as well. And before closing, ask if any of our moderators would like to share any parting thoughts. Senator Patterson, I see you.
I would just like to say thank you to DCBS. Thank you to Director Stoffey, to all your staff and thank you to all of our presenters. This is really important information and thank you to everybody who provided public testimony as well and for the reminder that that can continue to be accepted. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Any other moderators? I know we had some conflicts. We've run a little long.
Yeah, Andrew, if you don't mind, I, hopefully my internet will hold out for this one, but I was able to listen and very much appreciate everybody who testified and all the information presented.
Thank you so much, Representative Noble. All right, with that, I'll just end by saying thank you once again. You can see the email address on the screen. We welcome any and all further comments, including those about the hearing and if there are any changes to it that you'd like to see for next year. So with that, thank you all very much and this hearing is adjourned.